Call the February 1st, 2022 Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Seated from your left to your right are Andy Mink, Gary Belkey, Marjorie Selinger, Lynn Conway, myself, Fred Dykman.
Ryan.
Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, and Town Planner Keith Bryant. First item, I guess seated tonight, if we have to make any real important decisions, would be Andy and Lynn, myself, Ryan, and Chuck. Okay. First item on the agenda of the minutes for January 4th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Second. Okay. I did notice that there was a wayward paragraph about drive-in theaters in the middle of the discussion of the Mason's Island Temple lighting play. So with that correction, we can proceed.
And was that in the January 4th?
Yeah.
Okay. And just to clarify, is that motion was for both sets of minutes?
Yes, it can't be forgot. Needed both sets of minutes.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Eyes have it. And the meeting of January 18th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any discussion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, got it. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, looks like that passed. Next is staff report. Keith?
Sure. This is item 5B1, Preliminary Discussion of Open Space Development. Property located at South Anguilla Road, Pocket Dock Assessors Map 49, Block 2, Lot 1, Zone GBR 130. So the applicant, Mr. Flack, has a presentation to introduce this proposal to the commission. This is an open space development proposal where instead of a regular subdivision, you get the same number of lots as you would with the normal one, but 50%, at least 50% of the property has to be conserved as permanent open space in exchange for flexibility on lot sizes and things like that. But let me turn the floor over to him here.
Is there any standby laptop?
Yeah, and we have this cordless mic too.
All right. You're right in front of the speaker. I think that's what's doing it.
Yeah, that's a... I'll walk away from the speaker a little bit. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time tonight. My name is Brandon Flack. My wife Cindy. David Cooley, our physical engineer, who's here with us tonight. We just want to take this chance to introduce you to a plan that we're working on and try and get some feedback from you all and see what you all think. So without any further ado, we'll get right into it. For those of you not familiar with the location, this is an overview. We're looking at Route 1. This is formerly known as the Crowley Farm, part of the Crowley Farm. It's on the lower part of South Anguilla Road. It's in a GBR 130 zone, and it's approximately 42 acres. My wife Cindy and I purchased this land in April of 2021. We immediately began bringing our Jim Cowan in, who did our wetlands testing and mapping, and started taking tests from the sites in the wetlands around the property because there's a number of tests that take time to go through, that we wanted to get data on as fast as we could. We started the A2 perimeter survey and completed that in October of this year. We talked to the Stonington Land Trust about a potential donation if we went with this open space route, where we'd have some land for the land trust, and Stanton was very in favor of that. We drew up our preliminary lot plans. I should say David drew up preliminary lot plans. And we completed the wetlands report. And two weeks ago, we went in front of the Conservation Committee where we got unanimous support for our idea for the plan. A little background on an open space development. It's not that popular. I think only one's ever been done in the town before. And the reason for it is this highlighted thing in green right here. It's really a challenge for developers. But let me just back up for a minute. In open space development, this is right from the Town Planning and Regulations 6622.1. An open space development allows us to have the flexibility to put residential units on the property where they're best suited. It's accomplished by taking the lot size and donating 50% of the land to someplace like the Stonington Land Conservatory as designated open space. Then the rest of the lots, you can develop the number of lots as would be conventionally allowed on that piece of land. The reason why this hasn't been very popular in the town before is if you donate half the land to the town and there's wetlands on that land, you have to make sure that there's the exact same amount of wetlands in the property that you're developing as in the property you're donating to the town. On most lots, it's probably not that attractive for a developer to do that, hence why I think this regulation has probably sat there unused by the town a number of times. But in our case, it actually fits. Just one more clarification on the open space is the number of lots. I sort of touched on that a little bit before. In the conventional yield plan, that depicts the number of building or dwelling units that could reasonably be developed on the parcel of land. So David had to create a plan where, using the conventional regulations for GBR 130, how many lots could we fit in this 42 acres? With a 15% open space regulation, you could not do a fee in lieu on the conventional plan. You had to make sure you had room for 15% open space as well. Then the design standards of properties on this, if you, if, once you go through the conventional plan, is in the open space development, we were not set by the size of the lots we have to do. There's, the setbacks are all sort of changed or reduced. It gives us a lot more flexibility. But you still can't build a house larger in the floor ratio, floor area ratio than the minimum size lot that could be put on the land and under the regular regulations. So I believe that's 130 times .04, which works out to be totally under the roof of about 5,000 square feet, including basement, garage. It's written as everything under roof in that area. So getting into it, this is the conceptual lot yield plan, and we have three copies of these with blowups here for you all if you'd like to see the printouts of it. But basically, what we have is this is South Anguilla Road. The map has been turned here, so north is pointed right towards me. And David, using the proper road frontage, not crossing, keeping the area proper for the lots for GBR 130, was able to come up with lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Lots 7 and 8 actually are the size of front lots because we use alleys here to connect them to the extra road frontage down there. So they actually have 250 feet of road frontage. It's just an alley to connect those two. It's actually a good plan. We've gone back and forth around it a couple of times, but it's not the best. It's not the best for the town. It's probably not even the best for Cindy and I as we're looking to build a house here and have some open space development around us. It pushes a lot of properties back into here by the, these are the wetlands right here in the middle. There's wetlands in the bottom, and there's a lot of wetlands in the south end of the property. The green area that I've highlighted there is the 15% open space on the conventional plan that we have to prove is viable in the conventional, in the conceptual conventional plan. And that's basically where we've gotten to so far with those eight lots on that.
How many acres are each of the lots?
How many acres is each lot? These, these front lots have to be three acres. Is that right, Keith?
Yeah.
So three acres for each of the front lots, six acres for each of the back lots, and these two are also three acres. A lot of the acreage comes from the alleys.
Thank you.
Now, the comparison you'll see is when we go to the open space plan, now rather than 15%, we're doing 50% giveback. And these, this is a 40-foot buffer zone that has to be around all the developable area. So there's a 50-foot buffer zone here, 40-foot buffer zone, excuse me. But that also is part of what gets deeded as the open space land. The lots all of a sudden get, make a lot more sense that we basically were able to draw eight two-acre lots-ish. Most of the front ones are still two acres. The back ones are about two acres. But they're going to feel big because of the amount of open land behind them. My wife and I before lived out on Al Harvey Road with a bunch of open space behind our house, and we just kind of really liked that feel. And we would probably take the more challenging lot here, which would allow us to develop a driveway properly to access this lot also. That's where we're in the, in the back of our head. The confusing part about this is, I'll draw this out one more time like we did before. In the open space development, we have lot 1, 2, 3, 4. This is actually lot 5, 6, 7, and 8. Now, if you pay close attention to lot 5, this is what we were talking about earlier, why this plan doesn't get used that much, because of the 50% giveback. So lot 5 has a capture down here of all this space. The house would go here. This would be all the wetlands that would be included in lot 5, which balances out the wetlands back here with the wetlands up here because of that loop. It's, and it was done that way in the name of the development out on 201.
Yeah. The one with Olivia Lane off North Stonington Road.
Yep. But I'll just say that Olivia Lane was much more of a, like a true subdevelopment, where they actually wanted to put in a road. I think there was a larger number of houses, and, you know, they were talking about houses that were much smaller. We're still trying to do the country feel, two-acre lots, lots of screening, lots of space. In the open space development, we were able to use the existing stone walls in some cases for lot lines. And, you know, even though it's half the land we bought, and we had no idea that this was even an option when we bought it, we do feel it's being able to use that other half, being able to use those 20 acres as we see fit, you know, like this way versus the 20 acres on a conventional plan. It just, it flows a lot better, and I think it creates a nice space. The Stonington Land Trust is very interested, and obviously the Conservation Committee was unanimously in favor of this plan.
How big is that lot to the far right, the usable area of it?
This lot, Keith, do you have that right in front of you? I'm going to say these lots are about two and a half acres. So I'd say this is probably two acres of usable space, maybe, maybe 1.8, I think was the lowest one we'd seen. This, I know back here, is six acres of wetlands.
Can you go back to the conventional layout, the conceptual, the previous page? Keith, is that, is that allowed to connect frontage via an alleyway like that to call that a legal lot?
You know, our, the subdivision regulations don't have a hard and fast rule about it. There's language about how the side lines of a property shall generally be at right angles to the street, but, you know, often when you're dealing with rear lots, you are dealing with, you know, the sort of funky lot lines like that. Now, you know, when it comes to the conceptual lot yield plan, the regulations don't offer too much guidance. It basically says, you know, you have to follow the normal rules of zoning and have the 15% open space set aside. And it says the burden's on the applicant to show that the conceptual lot yield plan is, is reasonable. So I, that's one of the main things, I guess, for this discussion is, you know, whether the conceptual lot yield plan is reasonable.
Who would mention, Keith, where we started? Was, we originally had this being one of the lots here because this is dry land right in here that could have been on the conventional plan. It probably would have been one of the easier properties to develop, but to access it, the driveway would have had to cross the wetlands. And so, you know, requesting a variance to do that in a GBR 130 was, we just deemed that that wasn't reasonable. And so instead, we drew it this way so there was no driveway-wetlands crossings.
And...
Well, that means you're trying to get as many lots as you can so you can get the same number of lots in the, in the open space subdivision.
And the...
My question is, is that, I mean, if anybody approached us with that subdivision plan with those alleyways in there, I mean, that is a bizarre layout to me. I, I've been at this for a while, and I've, quite frankly, I've never seen anything that looks even similar to that.
And I should, so the, the strips along the back, the sort of the top, those, those will not, the, the idea is not to use those as driveways, right? The driveways would be the gray areas?
I understand that, but it's to, it's to get frontage, correct?
Yep. Because the lot is so...
For the purposes of getting frontage. It's still, it's still, I mean, under the definition of reasonable, I don't know. I guess I leave it to everybody to reach their, reach their own conclusion. It's my idea of an underlying plan is, would we approve that as a plan? And, and I, I mean, I guess if that meets the, the letter of the law, the regulations, we ought to change the regulations so it couldn't be done. But it is a very unusual layout.
I, I did get inspiration from this from further down on South Anguilla Road.
I'm glad.
There was, just about a mile further north, there's a lot that does a loop behind to get the road frontage, and then their, their access is here. I didn't bring that, that example with me, but that's where the idea came from.
Is it a new...
Well, that's actually helpful if it has been, if it has been done before and it's a past practice under the regulations, then...
I, I didn't look up...
I'd just like to know from the, I guess, the zoning enforcement officer who would rule on this, if there's anything in the regulations that would preclude that layout.
Sure.
Because it is, it is special.
And that's the question we wrestled with as well. And we could almost propose two conceptual plans without trying to make it too difficult, but trying to do it properly, is this is a vacant lot right here. And so the idea was, you know, we would go to the owner of this lot, and conceptually, would they sell us this lot? And then we could access this property here and divide this into two without a wetlands crossing. But that was kind of another step in the process that if we're trying to prove conceptually, how do we prove conceptually they'll sell us the lot? Do I say I'll pay you a million dollars, you know? I'm not...
I don't know if we could even consider that, you know? I mean, you can only deal with the property you own...
Sure.
...in an application and you don't own it. So I think, I think as a conceptual plan, just from my perspective, it would have made more sense to show the, the developable area on the other side, you know, that you've, you've included in that green patch. It would require a wetlands permit, but, you know, I, to me, that makes more sense.
And in this zone, there's a non-infringement area of 100 feet from the wetlands.
Yep.
So it's literally not allowed to cross the wetlands. You could get a variance in theory, but that might be more of a stretch for a conventional yield plan...
Okay.
...because of that.
Okay. I just, I raise it as a question, and, and I think, I think the building official who normally interprets, you know, the definition of lots in zoning regulation should tell us that that would be allowed somehow, Keith.
I think, isn't the language, could you read the language, Keith? Because I think the language leads a little bit to the judgment of, of the board. It's not cut and dry.
That has to do with the side lot lines?
Yeah.
It's...
So I agree with you, Chuck. I'm just saying that I, I think that, you know, it's that whole reasonable kind of thing for the board to decide.
I guess that's the question I'm raising. Is it reasonable? And that's a judgment that if it, if it, if it isn't, if it's allowed under zoning, then is it reasonable?
Right.
I guess that, there's two questions.
Yeah.
But we don't have to make a judgment about the reasonableness of the conventional plan. It's just about the proposed plan, right?
Well, it makes sense. It makes sense because you, if, let's say, for instance, the zoning official came back and said, "We would never allow that lot to exist." So, so to me, then it's, it's, it's unreasonable to show it in the, in the underlying plan, and the total number of lots that would be allowed would go down.
Right. To seven.
So that, it isn't, I, I don't feel like I can make that judgment. I, I think that somebody has to interpret the zoning regulations to see if that lot, if those lots on that plan all meet the definition of a lot in the zoning regulations.
This is excellent feedback. Thank you.
Well, here's that, here's that language. This is Section 546 of the subdivision regulations. It says, "Side lines of lots shall insofar as practicable be either at right angles or radial to street lines. Variations from this rule will be made only where it's impractical to do so." So it doesn't say very much. And the more you get into sort of rural areas and rear lots in town, the more you do have these sort of funky lots.
I was actually surprised by the number of lots I could find that the road frontage was not the driveway.
But are they due?
I've seen that before, but I've never, I've never seen it where it's connected in this manner, you know? And, and to me, if you're going to allow that number of lots, then you have to say, is this something that you would, you would allow?
Mm-hmm.
And to me, that's not really a question for me tonight. That's a question that I think the building official has to tell us. Would that be allowed?
Sure.
Under, are those legal lots under our zoning regulations?
So just, I'm just trying to keep up with you, Chuck. Are you asking these questions with the idea that if those were not acceptable under a conventional lot plan, that you would like to see the number of lots in the open space development reduced to match what would be feasible under the conceptual, or under the traditional plan?
I, I think that would be a result of that. I'm not really asking for that. What I'm asking is, is, are those lots, are they compliant with our zoning regulations? And if they are, then those, that's the number of lots that he can get. That's the yield. If they're not, if they're not, then perhaps there's another plan that could be developed that would be more reasonable where those rear lots get their frontage another way somehow so that, so that the developer ends up, you know? Because I don't, I don't think there's anything about the acreages or the way it's divided that in any way, you know, is, is unreasonable, except it leaves all these irregular parcels that in a conventional subdivision, I don't think, I mean, at least if you were here trying to get that approved, I would, I would want the same ruling.
Sure.
Are they legal lots? So that's a question for the building official right now. What are the zoning laws?
One more question for you. What is the, there's three lines that go across the back of the property, sort of at a 45-degree angle and then down. What is that?
Power line.
Power line?
Yep. And it's actually a, it's a Connecticut Light and Power power line. One week after we closed on the property, storm hit and the tree came in and knocked the power lines down, started a fire right in here, burned out this area in one of the nor'easters, and one of the neighbors back here called on it. I called when I found it and asked the company to shut it down, and they didn't respond to me for a week. I called again the next week. Finally, I sent them a written letter saying, you know, this is new property to me. These power lines are down. Nobody's responding to me. And apparently, they had shut it down that night, and it's just backup power, and it hasn't been active since. The lines are still lying on the ground, but the power's been off since the middle of October.
So is the plan for those to be buried in the subdivision?
Uh, the...
So how would you do that? Like, I mean, I'm assuming that all the lines would be buried in a new subdivision.
Yeah. The, this, this isn't the power line that, that serves South Anguilla Road. It's some sort of auxiliary power for the police department or something like that. South Anguilla Road, we've got a couple of poles marked here, and I think the, the plan is to cross the road here and then be underground to the lots.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So with the, the proposal that you currently have on the screen, what are the sizes of the houses from the floor area ratio? What, what did you calculate out?
Including the basement and under deck area, a total of 50, 5,250 square feet, I believe.
For each lot?
For each lot. So I think it...
We don't, we don't talk about the basement or the under, the...
Yeah. The basement doesn't usually count unless it's like a walkout basement type of situation.
In, in the way I've read the regulations in this plan, in the GBR 30 applying to open space, it does though. I've kind of gone into this, I, well, at least that's the way I've, I've read it, and I think David and I went through it once or twice, that it's, everything considered under roof, and I believe it even calls out basements, garage space, any, any floor space. So I think we're looking at 3,300 square foot houses with basements.
You know, it might be a quirk of our zoning regulations where a typical, what you call a basement in zoning is called a cellar, which doesn't count, and a basement is sort of that lower space, like a walkout basement that does count. So I think that it might just be the way it's worded. I'll take a look at it, but...
Okay.
You, you probably wouldn't have to count the cellar.
Got it.
That level.
You're really hurting yourself if that doesn't have to count.
Yeah, I mean, reasonably, you know, I think we'll, we'll maintain some sort of design standards. We really just want to sell lots, but we want to have a little bit of say over the first houses that get built. But I think, you know, three, you know, I think we would probably be thinking, you know, thinking 3,000 square foot houses as kind of a max with garages is what we, you know, it just would support each other well on that part of the road. We were going to even start out, Cindy and I were going to start smaller than that, but that's because I want a really big garage. Boots, toys, things like that.
So when would you be prepared to come with a formal proposal that we would vote on?
David?
I would say next two or three months. We have to establish, but this is a really important test to establish the number of lots. It's the next thing that I'm going to turn to, because it's very specific, so I need to know where the lot is.
Well, we've got a couple of important questions to answer, but it sounds like, besides that, it sounds like it could work.
Yeah, we're...
I don't think there's any question that, that, that is a very nice layout. I, I think that looks good. The question is, is your underlying, you know, lot yield plan something that's allowed by zoning regulations? And it probably is, but, you know, the zoning enforcement officer or the building official, whoever Keith tells you has to rule on that, should take a look at it.
Okay. That's great. Awesome.
But is that true, Keith? So Chuck, I just want to just ask that question. I, I, in the past, when we have done subdivision approvals, when somebody's come to us for a subdivision, I don't think the planning and zoning officer says, yes, this is a lot, this is a lot, this is an appropriate layout. I think that the planning board, or, you know, that we say we approve how this is all put together. Now, Keith, I could be wrong, but...
No, I mean, that, that is essentially correct, that there's no official determination necessarily, but I think it would help to get her, you know, her eyes on it.
Yeah, I don't think as, as much of this kind of work as I've done, I want to make that interpretation. I, I think that the zoning, the zoning applies... I, I think that the zoning, the zoning applies, the definition of, of a lot is in zoning. And because these are so unusual, I think we should seek that input, just...
So it's good to have you, Keith.
First of all, I, I would ask, I would ask for that for myself if no one else wants it. In order for me to support it, I, you know, if there are lots, there are lots. And in fairness, it, it works, you know? But if they're not, then maybe there's some other scheme that works better than, than that specific layout.
But I would agree with Chuck. I personally think it's a great, it's a great idea, um, as long as the rationale supporting it is there.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Certainly a lot later.
Yeah.
That's very helpful appreciation, too. Laid out very nicely.
Thank you. Yep. Just one more question if I could ask for some feedback on. I, I highlighted this part of the regulation in green because it's even in the town plan of conservation that the town wants to change this regulation. And it's, it's actually just too bad that it's there because there's so many pieces of property around Stoneington that might have been developed with much more open space than 15% if that was different. Now, I know we're not going to change the regulations here, but when we get to the part of the plan where we've agreed on the number of lots and we're looking at this open space development, is it feasible that I could request a variance and gift this to the town as well? So the town would be getting more than 50% of land. It's mainly wetlands. But then have the land prorated back into this land on the normal wetlands proration? So it'd be 100% wetlands, six acres. It'd allow us to get two acres back here, which would just create a little bit easier lot lines in this area. Is requesting a variance on something like that? I mean, I'm a homeowner, I'm not a developer. This is our first go at it, so...
It's a different board. Variance is a different board.
Okay.
Is a waiver appropriate?
You're really not able to waive your regulations for something like this, for this sort of bulk requirement.
Yep.
It would be the, uh...
ZBA.
... the task of the ZBA. So it's tough to know what they would think because their, their job is to look at whether there's literal hardship.
Right.
A few members of this board, used to be members of ZBA, who have been in that role where, you know, they don't look at, is it a good idea?
Got it.
As much as, is there something about the land that, where you can't meet the regulations because of something particular to the land? So it's tough to know if they would, uh, what they would say about that.
You may want to talk to your engineer and surveyor, though. It's a weird parcel shape. That can be a hardship. And, and the lot lines are irregular. But when you come to subdividing a board, a, a variance, and your, your lawyer could advise you on this, would this be considered a self-imposed hardship? You know, in other words, it's not a hardship for the piece of property as it exists now. It becomes a hardship when you want to subdivide. That would make it self-imposed and that the board could not consider a self-imposed hardship.
Got it.
But your lawyer, your lawyer could advise you on, on whether those hardships of parcel shape and really the configuration of the wetlands give you a hardship that's related to the land and you might be able to make that argument.
Excellent. All right, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
So item 6A, Old Business, PZ 2133 SPA and CAM Latimer Point Condominium Association, site plan and coastal area management review application for replacement shed, new shed, reconstruction of the portion of the deck stairs, installation of new septic system, enlarge one-story dwelling to a one-and-a-half-story dwelling, modification of decks and construction of a new covered porch. Property located at 26 East Shore Road, 8 Crooked Road, 107 Latimer Point Road and 126 Latimer Point Road, Zone RM20. Is anybody here from the Latimer Point Condominium Association? Well, it doesn't look like it, that their surveyor is here, but maybe it is pretty simple. Maybe we can just, uh, go ahead and see if we run into a jam and need to table until the next meeting. Those of you who've been on the commission a while...
Right. These have come before us almost annually.
Right.
Where they bundle, they bundle all the changes in the, within the condominium into one application, which is nice.
Yeah. Because, you know, the Latimer Point properties, they look like individual lots, but it's really a bunch of single-family houses on one large lot. So instead of them applying for variances all the time, um, the town in Latimer Point established a process where they apply for these site plans and they bundle their small changes. Out of all the ones we've had, this is probably the simplest with the things they're looking for. Replacing a shed with a slightly larger shed. It says 10 by 80. It's really 10 by 8 shed, as shown on the plans. Reconstruct deck stairs at a house. The biggest one is to enlarge a one-story house into a one-and-a-half-story house. And there's also a new 8 by 12 shed. Unlike most of these applications we get from them, all of these are out of the flood plain, so we're not dealing with any of those flood hazard issues. Let's see here. This is a CAM application also. We got comments back from DEP, um, in which they didn't have any issues here with this. The town engineer just had a very minor comment about adding E and S controls, downgrading to the septic system and splash pad and water spreader at the base of roof leader outlet. No zoning issues with this. So if this is approved, the recommended stipulations are, number one, individual zoning permits for site development plans shall be submitted prior to construction. Number two, improvements shall conform to the public health code requirements as determined by Connecticut DEP. And number three, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer regarding the E and S measures for Unit 52.
Keith, um, what's the floor area ratio for this lot? Since they're adding, they're enlarging the sheds and adding a shed. I know 8 by 10 doesn't seem like a lot, but the other one is quite big for the size of the lot.
Yeah. I mean, the RM20 zone, it's, it's .15. It's something that with every application, they keep track of. They have a giant spreadsheet of all the floor area on all these lots and, um, they're still not at that level.
Each individual property is, is held to that standard?
Um, the whole thing.
The whole development.
The whole lot is held to that standard.
These aren't really lots. These are, these are common areas.
Yeah.
Exclusive, exclusive use areas, but even the road, even the road is, is not a road. It's, it's a common area. So it's done like a, like a condominium project instead of like a subdivision. And, and I think they lump all of the property into the gross area calculations. And, uh, and that's how they, that's how they make those determinations. This particular surveyor's done an unbelievably good job on this thing.
Right, he's been keeping track of it for 20 years.
Ed Lally is, Ed, his father were a very good surveyors. Ed's an engineer also.
So what you're saying is we rely on Latimer Point Association to keep track of the overall floor area ratio and any kind of changes? They're gonna tell, tell us when they're out of space and nothing else is available because of that? Is that...
Uh, yeah.
You're relying on them to do that? That's part of their responsibility?
That's what every, that's what every application that comes before us has a private engineer and a private surveyor that stamp in every application you look at. There's, they're telling you, if you have a question, you can check the calculations. But, but, um, this is no different than any other application in that sense, that the surveyor is attesting to the, to the accuracy of it and they're putting their stamp on it and saying that it meets certain standards that are defined by the state. And those standards of accuracy require that these things be calculated. So it would be malpractice to say that it conforms and it doesn't.
So, so do they say in the survey what the overall floor ratio, current overall floor ratio is?
Yeah, the maximum...
We have the spreadsheet.
Yeah, the maximum is 15.
Yeah.
And it is 11.4.
Okay, so I've got quite a bit of room.
That's basically the question.
Yeah.
Right. And we would just change the typo about the shed? Because it's on the plan.
Yes. Yeah, you wouldn't want...
Yeah, on the plan, it's correct. So...
Good point.
That's, that's our mistake.
Would that be a force stipulation if we were to do it? Or is it just... Yeah, it should be, really.
Well, it's not what, they didn't apply for anything, uh, you know, an 80-foot long shed.
The plan shows it's, it's eight, not 80, so...
So I think it's only in the staff report? Because it's, it's not written in the blurb on the agenda. Yeah, so I think it's only in the staff report itself.
But no harm in just making sure. We, I mean, lots of times we have these communities come back later and there's ambiguous, you know, there's something that's ambiguous. So just, just to make it very, very clear, I agree with you. It's probably not 100% necessary, but, um, we've had this happen before on different things.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have any problem with this application. I think it's straightforward compared to, there's been two of these applications since I've been on the commission and, and the other ones were more complicated because they proposed activities within the 100-year flood zone.
Yeah.
And they were more complicated from an engineering perspective. But these are, are simple, um, of matters and, and I would have no objection to approving it because the plans, the plans are so detailed that have been submitted by Mr. Lally. I would have no objection to approving it. Unless someone else on the commission wants to hold off.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, in fact, I would, I would move that we approve the application with the recommended three stipulations and an additional stipulation, uh, number four, that the, um, application which indicates an 80-foot length be corrected to 8 feet.
I second the motion.
Second motion? Any, any more discussion? Anybody? No? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Aye, aye.
So the other items for Old Business tonight recommend tabling till the next meeting. This is 6B, um, the mushroom-growing establishment on Tagwalk Road and 6C, the bond release for Toll Brothers. So we can deal with those at the next meeting and no public hearings tonight. And, um, that is it for the agenda.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them, sir.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We're done. Not a record, but pretty good.